Good morning. At this time, I'd like to now call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And at this time, could we all stand and make the pledge of allegiance in which we will have roll call thereafter?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our board clerk will do roll call.
Carol Brown, Excellent Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valdina Nguyen, Stacy Yeager.
Present.
Thank you. So I would like to thank Northwest for accommodating us as we are having our meeting here today. And I also want to say congratulations to Yolanda Clark, Janie Humphries, Randy Lopez, and Dr. Valdina Nguyen for being elected, and we're expecting great things from us as a board beginning in 2020. I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make... Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The motion has been passed. Now, we will have recognition awards for the proclamation of America Education Week.
I'd ask that the board, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept a proclamation recognizing November 18th through 22nd, 2019, as American Education Week as submitted by Jen Holt, President, NEA KCK Edwin Birch, Executive Director for Communications, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
I have a motion, please.
So, American Education Week is a fantastic time for all of us to really promote the depth of work that's happening in schools and that needs to happen, and the amount of collaboration that it needs to take place. So, next week is a fantastic week. All the activities are site-based, so don't be surprised if you get an invitation to come out to sites and be educator for a day. Yeah, and we will take a second, and we will read the proclamation.
Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And?
Whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And?
Whereas, education employees, be they substitute educators, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And?
Whereas, schools encourage community, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby proclaim November the 18th through the 22nd, 2019, as the annual observance of American Education Week.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize. I'm so excited about being here. I failed to do one of the things that I'm expected to do, which is to go through our board norms and protocols. So with that, I will back up and do that at this particular time. As a board, we will respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district to follow the best practices in managing... I'm sorry. I had a problem with my computer. In managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how we conduct meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Thank you. So at this particular time, we will now go ahead and have a welcome.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
To Dr. Faust, to the board, to Ms. Drew, and everyone that's here. Welcome to Northwest Middle School. Again, we welcome Dr. Faust, Dr. Hookfin, and all of the executive cabinet. We are glad that you're here today. Northwest Middle School, this year, we have a lot of things that we are working on and doing. This year, we are proud to have over 900 students in our building, and as many of you know, that's a far cry from 200 that we used to have a few years ago. We're also proud that we're making progress in some areas. We know that we have a long way to go and a long way to grow, but it is our intent to make that happen. A couple of things that I would like to highlight for you just in a few very short minutes. Our attendance rate this year is improving, and we are seeing a nice decrease in our suspension rate. We are also working smarter and harder in our PLCs as we are tackling the data to help our school grow and prepare. You were able to hear our band this morning. We're very proud of them, and I'm also very proud that just this past weekend, we had several students from our school attend the math regionals for the state in Kansas, and they did very well. They were up against a lot of high school students, but they performed very... excuse me, very well. And also proud that we had several of our students who are part of the district Battle of the Books, and you all are sitting in the school that took first place. I just wanted to say that twice. In the Battle of the Books. And actually, the band teacher that was here earlier leading the band is the leader of our Battle of the Books, doing some things cross-curricularly, so we're very proud of them. We're also excited that, I want to throw this in here, we are able to receive additional staff to help support our population, thanks to our finance office and to the human resources office. We have additional staff that we are going to be prepared to hire so that they can help our students continue to grow. So again, we're excited that you're here and want to welcome you to Northwest Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that I did have the privilege of going to the literacy festival, and it was great to see Northwest coming out first. And again, I want to thank the band for playing for us this morning and entertaining us as we were waiting to get started. At this time, we will now have community comments, and before we do, want to make sure that each of those who are going to be presenting understand the rules for speaking. At the beginning of their remarks, you must give us your name. Your address and your phone number shall be recorded on the roll to be maintained by the board clerk. This will permit the board to direct their concerns to the proper school official for response and follow-up. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, which may include questions by the board, and you will be timed and advised when your time has expired. Extensions may be granted upon the majority of the vote from the board. Speakers may only address the board about policy-related issues and general community concerns. Speakers wishing to submit written materials to supplement their remarks should make 12 copies for proper distribution, and if there is a hot issue, speakers will be encouraged not to duplicate the remarks of others. If a person wishes to discuss a topic which is already on the board agenda, the speaker's comments will be deferred until that item is called up for discussion. The speaker will be permitted to comment as determined by the board president or presiding officer. The speaker must adhere to the three-minute time limit. So with that in mind, we now will have Mr. Jeff Wells, who is coming forth. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Jeff Wells, and I live at 4505 Eaton Street, Kansas City, Kansas, and my phone number is 314-503-1912. What I do is, apart from working in a regular job, I volunteer and organize footsal, which is a five-a-side soccer game, which is made really for playing inside of gyms, just like on this floor. What I focus on are kids who are all refugees, and they all basically come from the J.C. Harman and the Wyandotte area, the schools, that is. As you may know, with soccer, just like with other sports, most of them are pay-to-play, so all the kids that participate have to pay, and then they have to travel somewhere. There are clubs that would love to have these kids, but they just can't get there. So I bring the training to these kids. And what I've been doing, basically, I started on the footsal courts outdoors, right next to the Wyandotte High School, and started training them. It became cold, very cold, actually, last year, and I was able to get a permit using my insurance from United Soccer Coaches, and I was able to use Mark Twain Elementary School gym, which was fantastic. The boys came along, we opened the doors at the end of school, and we played twice a week, and I practiced there, and then we played in matches in various leagues. This year, when I applied, I discovered that it would be $760 for two sessions each week per month. So that kind of blew out, really, my brilliant plan of helping these kids. It is a very, very rewarding program and truly fantastic. We buy these boys, and if there were girls coming to, shoes, uniforms, just everything, pay their league fees. These kids, they really, they're just so much joy in what they do. There's so much through sport, as you know, that helps to educate them and get them into our community. The kids come from Congo, Uganda, Tanzania, Ethiopia, Honduras, Nepal, just about everywhere. We love to keep the opportunity open for them, and what we'd really like is somehow for the policy for using school facilities to be facilitated such that we could benefit these kids by having either free or a nominal fee so that we could use the facilities. And that's basically what I'm asking for. So I'm open to questions. I'm happy to demonstrate footsal or talk to you about our kind of broader aims and objectives.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
When would you need to know an answer?
Well, ideally, this week, but if... We, right now, of course, need to be indoors, and we've entered the boys into two different leagues, so we'd like to get indoors pretty soon. Luckily, the weather was fantastic on Sunday when we were outside, but I kind of feel that's going to be the last time we're going to see decent weather.
And you're going to provide the insurance certificate?
Yes, I have an insurance certificate through United Soccer Coaches Association, which is, gives you the coverage that you need. And in fact, I've now recruited three other helpers, all of whom are coaches, and I signed them all up for United Soccer Coaches, so they all have the same insurance.
And you'd like to use Mark Twain? Is that the only facility?
Actually, in the winter, that's the obvious one, because it's within walking distance of the kids. In the spring, what I'd really like to do is go outdoors and use the outdoor soccer fields, if possible, because obviously, it's, you can accommodate more kids outdoors, and as long as it doesn't clash with school facilities, we could get there, the kids could get there. That's, it's very important that the places are within walking distance of the kids, because they can't really do anything without transportation.
Have you spoken to the athletic director to see a partnership or to ask if there was a partnership available, or have you met with the athletic director to see other options?
No, I haven't actually spoken to the athletic director, although Stephen Linkus was going to introduce me to Tammy straight afterwards, so I'm really looking forward to having that conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I guess my question, Madam President, should we add this to our executive session to talk about, or what's the protocol? Because he needs to know within a week.
Well, I'm going to refer that to Mr. Goheen.
Well, it's in public comment right now. There's not an item on the agenda, so if you wanted to have a discussion among the board members about it, either during an executive session or otherwise, you'd need to motion to amend the agenda at some point.
Okay.
After you get done with the public comment section.
And also, I think it would be beneficial to know, to talk to the athletic director for a conversation to be had with her to see also options rather than making a H.C. decision. If we do add it to the agenda, it may have to be postponed or tabled.
I think before we add it to the agenda, we need to make sure that we have the proper information in order for us to be able to discuss it, and so to follow protocol and try to give him an answer before the week is out.
Yeah, the only issue you're going to run into, and I'm not trying to push you one way or the other, I think your next, is your next board meeting in December?
Yes, it is.
And so, if you're going to consider waiving any kind of fee or adjusting the fee, that because of the way your policy is set up, that has to be a board decision item. It could be a situation where, you know, you could have like a special meeting or something if you really wanted to address it post, post today, but if it is something that you do want to address today, then your options are fairly limited. Again, I'm not weighing in one way or the other on what you do. I just want to make you aware of that, that you do have limitations on when you have board meetings.
Okay. Ms. Humphries, did you have anything to say?
I think we need to amend the agenda.
Okay. So could I get a motion that we can amend the agenda to add this in for an executive session to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Okay, next we have Dana Spoor, who is coming to talk about facility dogs in schools.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me talk. My name is Dana Spoor. I'm 20873 West 115th Street in Olathe, and I'm the instructional coach at Lindbergh Elementary. I'm here today to introduce you to Oakley and seek your guidance. Oakley's a two-and-a-half-year-old purebred lab who is intentionally bred, selected, and trained by KSDS to be a service animal. As a working dog, she's trained to provide physiological, emotional, social, and physical support to children in the school setting. She was trained for more than two years and has passed intensive testing through Assistance Dogs International, been certified by Therapy Dogs International, and passed good canine citizen requirements. I applied for a KSDS facility dog more than three years ago and was informed in August about Oakley. Pursuant to board policy, I secured my principal's approval to bring her to school. In an abundance of caution, my principal and I reached out to district administration to ensure we were following all policies and procedures. With administration's approval, we invited parents and students to meet Oakley over several days and documented interactions with students. Oakley was able to decrease students' emotional distress, increase students' time in the classroom and on task, and even helped one student remain focused during Kansas Assessment Testing. We've had one family request Oakley to be incorporated into their child's morning routine to help ease her anxiety. To date, I've been asked for and provided the following items: permission slips from every student's guardian or parent at Lindbergh, and we got 100% participation; proof of liability insurance, which I have an amount of half a million dollars, and my insurance company's contact information; copies of policies and procedures from districts throughout Kansas regarding dogs in the school environment, including Olathe, Topeka, and Wichita; contact information for district personnel who have experience with facility dogs in their schools; and academic research on the value of facility dogs in the educational setting. Much of the information I have provided to administration is included in your packet, as well as articles of interest and photos of Oakley and some students. Despite having provided all this information and despite the positive results from Oakley's limited time in the classroom, she is still not permitted to attend school. I've been informed by KSDS that if she is not allowed to return to school in the near future, I'll be asked to surrender her back to the organization so that she, her skills can be put to use in another school. I'm here today to ask the board what additional steps are needed to get Oakley into the classroom before we lose this tremendously valuable asset to our students, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you for coming today.
You're welcome.
So you're an instructional coach, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So is there any teachers who are certified to work with the dog besides you, or are you the only one?
You actually certify the dog, not, the handler has some testing, but really, it's, and the dog is not away from me. Dr. Bruto has taken the dog and the counselor have, but according to all the things, as long as I'm in the building, she is fine.
So have the teachers been taught how to properly work with?
I went to every single classroom and talked with the class, with the students and the teachers about the things Oakley can do and cannot do, but she would not be left with a teacher without either Dr. Bruto or myself or the counselor with her. So we wouldn't leave her in a classroom without supervision.
Okay. So what training has Dr. Bruto have in relation to working with the dogs?
Her mom trains facility dogs, so she has that background, plus I've went through quite a bit with her under KSDS guidance. They kind of gave us a brief class on how to let other people handle her within the school environment.
So how often would you be away from doing your job and working with the dogs within the classroom?
I would not. She would travel with me to the classrooms, because I'm in the classrooms all day. Dr. Bruto has kept her in her office for students that really need her, and I'm able to continue doing what I'm doing. She was, one of my requirements was that she would not have to be with me all day long with KSDS. That was one of the things we worked out, that there would be other people in the building that would be allowed to be with her.
So who did you work with from our staff to talk to the authorities for the Kansas Board?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Who from our staff did you work with when you worked with the Kansas Board to make those arrangements?
Who I worked with within KSKCKPS.
Yes, who did you work?
Dr. Hookfin has been absolutely amazing, Mr. Sanders. I believe they have talked to other people, but those are the two we worked with directly.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will be giving a response. We have one question.
I'm sorry. When would you need to know? What's your timeline?
[inaudible].
Thank you. So at this time, we are going to have reports from the superintendent.
Madam President.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Would we also need to add that to our executive session? If she needs to know by next week, and we don't meet again until December the 9th.
I don't think we need to. We'll just have to wait until December. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
The other board members?
If she has to know by the end of next week, we can't wait till December.
So you wanted to do this in an executive session, whereas we will discuss?
As well as when we discuss the other items. I mean, in all fairness, I think when people come and they make a request, as best as we can, try to resolve it and see what we can do.
I don't think the first one can be in executive session. I'm not sure about the second one.
Well, the, I think the first issue is related to the soccer fields. There was an executives, as I understood it, the motion to amend was to add it as an executive session item so that you could have a discussion about any legal issues that related to use of the facilities and that part of it. Whether you take action following that or not is up to the board. But you couldn't take any action item in the executive session. I'm not sure what the second request is. I know you're wanting to add it to the agenda, but is that also an executive session for the same rationale?
Liability.
Yeah, the issue of liability, and if we could add them both, then we could discuss.
They have to be separate items.
They have to be, okay.
But if you wanted to do that, you could do that. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. So do we need to make a motion to add?
Yeah, if somebody's wanting to add it to the agenda, it has to be a motion to add it to the agenda. I mean, ordinarily, we do this all at the front end when we do the agenda, but...
You can do it.
That would be the way.
Madam President, I make a motion that we add this item to the agenda, please.
The motion has been made. Do I have it seconded?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? The ayes have it. So... I want to go ahead and do the tour for Northwest. Okay, at this particular time, we're going to open up and have a tour of Northwest so that we can see the students who are being involved in learning, and so we're inviting everyone to please come and go. We'll be breaking up into groups, after which we will take about 20 minutes? 15 minutes for touring through the building, and then we will reconvene. It is 8:54, and we ask everyone to please be back here at 8:10. Thank you. At this time, we will convene and continue on with our meeting. I'd like to thank the Northwest Middle School staff for allowing us to come in and observe and see our students in direct action of learning and making sure that they are going to be focusing on staying on track. At this time, we are going to have the reports by the superintendent.
Hold just a minute. I need to get log back in.
Oh, okay. It was given to us.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item an update on highly qualified paraprofessionals as submitted by Stephen Linkus, Chief of Staff, Lisa Walker, Executive Director for Federal Programs, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent
Thank you, Dr. Faust, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Faust, and executive members of cabinet. I'm here today to share an update of highly qualified paraprofessionals. As a part of the federal programs team, we are working on developing our procedural frameworks, and as a part of the procedural frameworks, we are reviewing compliance requirements and then conducting self-assessments to see where we are on track with our policies and procedures and where we may have some gaps. As a part of those self-assessments, one area we recently reviewed was in regard to instructional staff, including paraprofessionals and instructional aides. As background information, the state of Kansas does not have a statewide requirement for employment as a paraeducator or paraprofessional. However, the state of Kansas does support and monitor those federal requirements for federal funding. So you'll see on the screen that requirements for professional, paraprofessionals, or any other individual whose primary function is to deliver an additional layer of instruction in addition to the certified teacher, must meet the following requirements. So they must have a high school diploma or a GED certificate, and then they must complete one of the three options you see listed there. So 48 hours and an institution of a higher education, or obtain an associate's degree, or pass a state-approved assessment that assesses their ability to assist in instructing reading, writing, and mathematics. So in conducting our assessment, we see that for our current status in the USD 500 district, out of 279 employees whose primary function is to provide that additional instructional support directly to students, we have 53 staff members who currently have, do not have the documentation of the required certification on file. So we anticipate that there will be 53 staff members who will need some support then in gaining that certification. So the district has developed a plan of support for that purpose, and I will share that with you. Of the three assessments that are recognized by the state, the district has determined that the Work Keys assessment is the best option as a part of our plan of support, and the reason for the Work Keys decision is due to the following. First and foremost, in addition to having an assessment that is recognized by the state, there is also a curriculum suite, and we have purchased a subscription to the curriculum suite so that employees can have access to instructional resources and support to prepare for taking the exam. So those who want to do some additional preparation prior to having to sit for the examination will have access to enroll in that curriculum suite and participate in lessons that are aligned to what they will be expected to demonstrate. We will open up the computer lab on Wednesday's early release in January and February for staff members to come in during that early release time, and with the assistance of our workforce team, they'll have access to technology and to the curriculum suite, and so they can work on preparing for that assessment. There are three tests that are involved in the Work Keys assessment, and you see those three tests listed there, and so the total cost for each exam will be $36. So we anticipate that providing support for these 53 employees with the curriculum suite and then paying for their first assessment will be approximately $3,400. The district will cover the cost of the exam for those staff members who come on Wednesdays and participate in those prep... and participate in those preparation sessions. However, if an employee wants to participate in that curriculum suite on their own and work at their own pace, they can do that, but they will be asked then to pay the $36 for their exam fee. Our assessment for Work Keys can be given at the district office, which was another reason for selecting Work Keys, because staff members will not have to travel to a different location in order to meet the certification requirements. And the district can validate that certificate online as soon as a staff member takes the exam. And the staff member will also receive a certification document for our files that we can maintain. So the timeline for the district's support plan will be for the remainder of November to notify employees and employees and confirm with them whether or not they have the certification and can provide that documentation to us. And then for those members who do not have that certification, I will be meeting with them in December and talking through the process with them. We'll get them enrolled in the curriculum suite for Work Keys, provide them with the credentials so that they can start accessing that instructional resource. In January and February, on Wednesday early release, we will open up the computer labs, and we will staff that with a workforce team member to provide some technology support and instructional support to staff members. And then we'll schedule two test administrations, probably at the end of February, beginning of March. Those dates have not been specifically determined, but that's the timeframe for doing that. And we'll give them an opportunity then to come in and take the test. Once we've done that in March, then we'll review all of the required certification. And for those staff members who do not have the required certification at that time, they will need to look at other opportunities in the district where there are openings and consider interviewing for those where there's not this required certification. We will only be able to continue with these individuals in their current positions in the following school year if they do have the certification requirements in hand.
Ms. Walker, can you share with the board how long this has been going on?
This is not a new regulation. It's been in place for probably over 10 years, I would say.
How many years?
10 years. Yes, so it's not.
Were we aware, were we aware as a district?
I do not believe the district was aware of the guidelines, Dr. Faust.
Is there a reason why we were not aware?
I believe the reason why is that when there is not a system in place to monitor all the requirements associated with federal funds, that you can start to experience gaps in your system. Things can be overlooked, and over time, then, there's not evidence that it was formerly a requirement. And so as staff members change, then there just isn't anyone who can share the requirements with the team.
Or are we still held accountable?
We are still held accountable, Dr. Faust.
Even though we were not, we didn't have a person who was searching or looking at this?
That is correct, sir.
So what are the, what could happen if we didn't obey this federal law?
What could happen, sir, is that the federal government could come in and take all of our Title I dollars.
And do you know offhand how much?
It'd be about over $10 million for the district.
Okay, and how many years again?
Over 10 years, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we all knew.
Thank you.
So clarification, when did we find out that we were not in compliance?
We found out when we started conducting the review of certification, this is a part of our process. So it's been in the last month.
Okay.
Where we've been aware of the numbers.
And to clarify, on the first slide, you indicated that 58 employees.
53.
Sorry, 53 employees did not meet the paraprofessional requirements.
Right.
Yeah, right there. And then we're going to verify that they didn't. So have these 53 already been contacted, or you will be contacting them?
We will be contacting them. They do not have the required certifications on file, nor have they indicated either through a resume or the application that we have on file that they have the certification. So we'll be visiting with them. I think we wanted to give an informational report to the board first so that you would understand the current situation and that the district has a plan of support in place, and that it is our, it is our determination that employees will receive the certification, and it will be a win-win for our students then and for also our employees. So we will be contacting them.
Do you know when the majority of those individuals were hired?
44 of the 53, which is about 84%, were hired prior to 2017.
Because I know now on the website for paraprofessionals, it does have the requirement of associate's degree as well as the number of credit hours. It's just really surprising that we didn't catch this earlier.
Yes, ma'am. All of the job applications are current with the requirements at this time for the district. Any other questions? Yes.
How many chances do they get to take the test?
The district will cover the cost of one exam for those employees who come and participate again in those Wednesday afternoon preparation sessions. Employees can retake the entire exam or one of the individual components of the exam at their own cost. So there are possible retakes, but we will ask employees to do that on their own.
Right, so we will pay for the first one. And if they have a problem with one of them, and they need to refresh their skills, then they have a chance to take the test again.
They can do that, yes.
Well, thank you for being able to bring a system that can be easy for employees to use, a strategy for when they can actually take the test, and a plan for getting them certified. I think this is really important for us to know and understand, because being on the board for two years, and our goal is to make sure that we're in compliance. So therefore, if we were doing things out of compliance, it's important for us to realize that we really need to make sure that we have the right key people in place who know the background so that we can make the best decisions as we can for our employees and most of all, our students. Because not having people certified as required by the state, that's concerning. It's really concerning to me, but thank you for bringing that strategy to us.
Of course.
Thank you. I'm just curious as to where are these pairs? At what level, middle, high school, or elementary?
That's a good question. They're at all levels, ma'am.
Okay.
Did we know that those that were working in special ed had to have the certification?
I believe we would know that, sir.
And we still chose to put them in special ed?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Prior to my administration.
That is correct, sir.
Wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
And thank you, Dr. Faust, for seeing the need to bring in someone who had a background in federal programs. I know that was one of the concerns that we had initially, is do we have the right people with the qualifications in place? And we've asked and we've questioned that for a number of years. So it's good to see that we have the right key people in place so that our federal dollars won't be at stake because of decisions that were made prior to us even being on the board. 10 years, we, I wasn't on the board, you know? So it's very valuable for us to know that when we are choosing people, we have to have those qualifications in place so that we won't make a mistake.
That's important.
I'd like to say the Kansas City Board of Education accepts as an informational item a report on dual and concurrent courses as submitted by LaShonda Bilbo Irving, Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Readiness, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools. And also, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you. Good morning, Board, Superintendent, Madam President, and Cabinet Members.
Good morning.
I am presenting an informational item about our dual and concurrent program information. The purpose of the partnership with KCKCC is to offer dual and concurrent courses to our high school students through face-to-face and online instruction. Students are able to begin their post-secondary opportunities while in high school with the expectation of obtaining the Diploma Plus endorsement. Dual and concurrent courses allow students to have access to college curricula while attending high school and earning college credit. This allows students and families the opportunity to save time and money while earning a certification and/or college degree. Lastly, students enter college prepared to succeed based on their previous experiences. What we have here is a list of all of the college courses that we offer on our high school campuses, and it's a wide variety of courses offered to all students at all five of our high schools. Next, here's our list of course offerings that students receive at the Technical Education Center. Again, a wide variety of courses for our students to choose from. I think it's important to note that the Tech Center not only houses students at KCKPS, but also students in surrounding districts. And while all of the programs at the Tech Center are wonderful, we only have 254 slots for students in KCKPS, which really limits the number of opportunities that we're able to give to our students.
Is there a reason why we only have 270 slots?
It's based on our district size, and so with Bonner and Piper and Turner, those schools also are, students are available to go to Turner as well. And so what I have here for you on the slide is our three-year trend data with our dual credit courses. And if you take a look in the blue, shows 2017, 2018, and at each high school, the number of students enrolled in dual and concurrent courses. Most currently in the red will show the fall semester, because we're still, students are enrolled in the fall semester. We have 1,065 students enrolled in dual and concurrent courses for the fall. The most students being enrolled at Sumner High School, where students are taking their college courses online, and then next wind out with 304 students enrolled in the fall. And so with the spring semester coming up, students have had the opportunity in October to take the Accurplicer exam, and those students have been registered and are ready to gear up for the spring semester. So we will look to see an increase in numbers across the board with adding our numbers for the spring semester.
Can you explain to the board what the Accuplicer?
So the Accuplicer is the test given to students to see if they are really college-ready and have the aptitude to be able to handle the rigorous coursework that college courses entail. And, yes, sir.
Have we always given the Accuplicer?
Yes, sir. We've always given the Accuplicer. I believe that being strategic, we've been able to offer the Accuplicer to more students. So it really is incumbent on the high school counselors and teachers to promote the Accuplicer and really talk about the benefits of, you can't just tell a student, hey, I have a test. Do you want to take it? You have to explain is what the benefits of the Accuplicer. Hey, do you want to save money for college? Do you want your parents to not have to spend a lot of money that first year? Do you want to finish college early? Well, if you do, then the Accuplicer is the test for you. So it's really in how you advertise the. It's really about how you advertise the opportunities and the benefits for students being able to take those tests. And so we do see an increase in students enrolled in our dual and concurrent courses. And then the opportunity that the students at Sumner have to be able to take those courses online really opens up access and opportunity for all students.
So going back to the Accuplicer, the Accuplicer is designed to see if students are ready to take.
Yes, if they have the, if they are able to really have the aptitude to be able to sustain the level of rigor that those college courses entail.
So if we knew that students were not ready for a college course, and we still put them in there and they failed or failed a course, are you seeing, and I know that may have happened.
So last spring semester, there were 92 students who received either a D or F in a college course, so they failed.
They take the Accuplicer?
They did take the Accuplicer and.
What their score was on the Accuplicer?
When I look at the range of scores, because I was just at Washington yesterday looking at courses, so the 255 is really the cutoff to say that, hey, anything above a 255. And so if you're looking really, you know, given the kid who just really scored at that 255, they would struggle. What didn't happen was a system in place to monitor students. Because, yes, the courses can be challenging, but students can still be successful with the layer of support. So this particular year, the college facilitators, they were responsible for monitoring students in those classes. Last year, students did not have a system of support that if a student was failing at the four or the eight-week progress report, no one really was to give them that guidance, just to say, now, we've been to college. You can drop a class. You don't have to keep a D or an F and have it adversely affect your transcript. And what it does for a high school student, it affects their financial aid. So when you have a D or an F on your college transcript, because these are college courses, when students get ready to apply for financial aid and they apply for college, they're really not going to be accepted. They're going to have to pay, because the government is not going to give them that financial aid based on the fact that they don't think they can pass the courses. Yes, ma'am?
One thing I also found out by talking to the counselors, the college advisors, is there's a credit that the community college offers to have an introduction, introducing them to the system, how to post, the expectations. And when I talked to the one for my daughter, they were saying most of the time, students do not take that class until senior year. And I said, absolutely not. I want my daughter to take it as one of the first courses so that she will have the right foundation. So have we looked at the order of classes? And also, it was more so of you can choose which class you want to go into, rather than saying, no, let's start with this class, let's start with this. So are the college advisors giving them the best path to start with, encouraging them to take that first one-credit class initially so they can truly know and have that introduction to college?
So that was not in the role and responsibility of the advisor at the time.
Okay.
So this year, it is in the role and responsibility of the facilitator. Also, further in the presentation, when you think about things to consider for the future, KCKCC offers a wide variety of courses. And so our students were able to choose from a wide variety of the menu. But I believe that we have to streamline our course offerings so that you're not taking French and German if your particular degree path does not call for that. Students need to be placed on and given a degree plan versus taking a wide variety of courses from the large college menu. And so their freshman seminar class, I think is what you're speaking of. Yes, students need to be able to take that in sequence before tackling some of the heavy courses. But I believe that what we've offered in the past has just been a menu that students can take a course, whatever course that they like, and then you end up with 60 hours, but not 60 hours that goes towards a degree. You just have 60 hours' worth of college courses because they have not been following a degree plan.
Thank you.
One of the things also to look at is our finances and how much the district spends in terms of college dual and concurrent courses. And while we are happy to do so because we know what a huge burden this lifts for our families. I have asked for our Chief Financial Officer to look at some of the fees that we are being charged. We are charged a technology fee of $7, but our students are using the computers that the district is giving them, and they're also using the Wi-Fi because we're in our own buildings. And so really, to look at some fee negotiation, to be able to see how we can really reduce the fee, you know, lifts the burden, of course, for the district as well. And then we have more money to offer more opportunities for students. So some of the future considerations is to streamline our course offerings to a pathway to associate degree completion. No longer will students be able just to pick from the menu of courses that KCC has to offer. Negotiating fees such as the technology fee and the student withdrawal fee. So November 15th, this week, is the day to withdraw. And so all students that have a D or a F, they will be withdrawn from those classes by Friday. So that course does not show up on their transcript as a failure, really eliminating that so students don't have that particular hurdle in their way when they step onto their college campuses in the future. Also, offering professional development opportunities to current high school teachers so we can have more of our own teachers are able to teach the dual and concurrent courses, because KCKCC also has a problem with instructor shortage. And so then we're limited with courses that we can offer based on the number instructors that we have. So we believe in, if we could build up the professional development and offer this opportunity to our high school teachers, more of them will be able to teach the college courses as well. Also, to increase our post-secondary partnership to ensure that we are able to scale to student demand. I told you early in the presentation that Tech, we only can bring 254 students to Tech. So we're limited. There are other local universities and colleges in the area that we might consider seeking a partnership with to be able to add to the variety of courses that our students could choose from and places where they can go. Also, offering courses during the summer to enable degree completion. If you look at what we have in. If you look at what we have in place right now, if a student starts their junior year and they take classes in the junior and their senior year, they don't get a chance to earn the degree completely. But if students were to go to summer school the summer before their junior year and the summer after their junior year, that will ensure that they get the 60 hours and can obtain the degree. And I think that that is the goal. That's what we're most wanting to ensure is that when students leave from us, they can obtain the degree. Last year on Fall, we have four students that obtained the associate's degree in their high school diploma. But I believe if we look in adding those courses for the summer, we would have an increase in number. Are there any questions?
A couple of things. So two years ago, when I first came on the board, we had talked to Metropolitan Community College, Business and Technology. They were really interested. They're on Front Street. And they specialize in utilities and climbing that pole, starting out at $60,000. So that would be a good recommendation for us to look at a partnership, buses and things of that nature. They said that back then, they would be more than happy to help take our students. But the concern wasn't what we were advised is that students can only go to a different community college if it was not offered at our Kansas City Kansas Community College. Is that in fact true? Or can we expand to other?
It's what I've heard, but I've yet to see anything on paper. And so my team and I, we've been looking for, where is that on paper? Because I'm definitely interested in looking at what other colleges and our universities we can partner with. Because as it stands, again, at Tech, we just don't have enough slots. With 254 seats, it's not enough. While we have great interest in students with HVAC, auto repair and collision, we just don't have enough seats for all of our students. And so I've heard it, but I've not seen it on paper. So I'm asking, you know, where can we find it on paper before we be able to be able to look at other entities?
Okay. And generally, as you know, it was generally practice rather than policy.
Yes, and so I'm looking for policy.
The sooner we can jump on this, the better.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, another thing is, you know, I remember Ms. Page saying too that those Ds and Fs were very much concerning when we were on the board. So what about behavior? We know that those classes are taken in the high school as well as some Tech. Do we have those behavior talk requirements and things of that nature? Because although it's offered to all, we do know if a student has disciplinary problems that that may not be the best candidate to see him.
And so one of the things that in revising roles and responsibilities, the facilitator that's on every high school campus, they actually sit in the classroom and conduct observations for the purpose of looking at the teacher, the instructor, and the student to make sure that there's not anything happening in the class that shouldn't be happening and that adult is able to address those issues. So we don't have issues of misconduct and misbehavior in our college courses because our students know what an opportunity this is. And they are really putting their best foot forward to do the work and to be able to earn that college credit.
Okay, and last question. You said there's a need for instructors. So when instructors for dual credits, do they just have to go through the, through the community college? Or would they have to have a teacher certification? Or what is the requirement for that?
So it can happen in various ways. But I think if we provide the professional development for our teachers, it would be our teachers who are certified that have, if you have a master's degree, all you have to have is another 18 hours in the course that you're teaching and you're able to be an instructor. So I think that if we would partner with the university to offer up those opportunities for our teachers with master's degrees, then we could make sure that our instructor pool stayed full.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You stated that when they have a D or an F, they would drop them from the role.
Yes, ma'am.
Would that person then go on some sort of, you know, how your freshman year, if you don't do well, you're on academic probation? And, because it just doesn't make sense to keep funding someone and they're having some difficulty. It's not that you don't care, but it does come down to the bottom line. And is there, are they put on probation? And you have to do this? And if not, then we got to find another option for you? Because it just seems futile to keep paying and they're not doing well. And that's one of the criticisms that we get a lot from Tepica about what we're doing and how we're spending money. And we want to make sure that we're using it wisely.
And so in talking to our counselors, looking at students' transcripts and their history, and also talking to the students, because if we've had to withdraw a student from the course one Fall semester, you shouldn't be immediately placing another dual-credit course the spring semester. You should be have opportunity to take some remedial courses, study skills, and then try again for the next Fall. And it really depends on, you know, what were the areas of deficiency? So what our facilitators do on Wednesdays, because they don't have the college courses on Wednesdays, the facilitators hold study sessions and study groups to really help students, support them in classes that they're not doing well. So with the supports that we have built in, we really need to take a look at why would we offer a second opportunity to a student who did not do well the first time? And it could be that there are certain modifications and accommodations that haven't been given to the student that we need to look at before entering a second dual-credit course.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So for individuals who say they want every student to take the college courses, is that applicable?
No, sir.
Why not?
Number one, if you can't pass the AccuPlicer, which a number of our students cannot, then they cannot take these courses.
Does every student want to take a college course?
No, sir.
Anything wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with that. I believe that if they don't want to take one of the courses at KC KCC, then we should encourage them to take the courses at the Tech so that you could focus on careers that you can enter into the work field if you're choosing not to go to college when you graduate from high school.
So what about a student who is going to college but just wants the traditional route?
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. Is that normal?
It is. And I believe that counselors should be able to, with the knowledge that they have, support students on a post-secondary plan regardless of what their interests are.
I just think it's very beneficial to be able to monitor our students and help them get on the right path in order for them to be very successful. How actively involved are parents in relation to this program?
Not as involved as we would like them to be. But I know that our facilitators work with, part of their roles and responsibilities is contacting parents to talk about how well students are doing in the classes. What the Tech Center has asked is that we have a day where we bring parents out to show them what we offer so that they can get buy-in from parents. And they believe in hopes that that will have students be more successful in the courses at Tech.
Okay. And to add on to that, you know, I'm really an advocate parent. However, I think what we could do better is when they're sitting down, taking the AccuPlicer and enrolling in classes, that child on their cellphone needs to call their parent. I had to tell my daughter, no. Before you do anything, you need to call me on the cellphone so that I can have that conversation at 3:00. And that was surprising.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I think it needs to just be the norm. If I'm sitting down talking to you, that parent needs to have a phone call too. Sure, some parents are at work, some parents are busy. But a voicemail, a text or something, I think would help keep parents engaged. As well as, I think it was last week, the AccuPlicer was being taken. Not many parents knew that their child was taking the AccuPlicer at that time. The importance of extra, so again, getting the word out, sending notes home, I know is hard. Or having those students sit there and text, hey, Mom, Dad, grandparent, foster parent, guardian, I'm taking this AccuPlicer, it means a lot to, or something. So that's just my recommendations to help with parents.
No, most certainly, and they're noted. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, that's at the Kansas City Board of Education. Accept as an informational item, an update on next steps on the review of school boundaries and capacity concerns as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning, Superintendent Board.
Good morning, Dennis Covington.
In the last board meeting, I brought to you all the urgency of us needing to look at our boundaries for our schools. There was no action. It was just for information. So I'm coming back to you today to get the next steps. There are things that needs to be done quickly in order for us to move to sort of correct our boundaries. We need to have a consultant hired that can help us facilitate community meetings, help you all determine your criteria for the boundary changes, even to come up with the boundary changes. We need to hire a demographer so we can look at enrollment trends and birth rates. But right now, I'm at a standstill till I get guidance from the board as to where you all want to go next. So my purpose here today is to find out where we want to go and a timeline as to when you all want to have the boundaries changed.
Okay. Thank you. Comments first?
I think we need to get it done as soon as possible so that by school year 2020, Fall 2020, we need to have a plan already in place and being able to notify parents, you know, before, if possible, before school lets out in May, if possible. I don't know how fast you can work. But if parents know in May about if they have to change schools or make different modifications. But I think it needs to happen by, you know, when school starts next year.
Right. I would concur that I think we definitely need to do that as soon as possible. And it's kind of frightening to think that Gloria Willis, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong, has a capacity of 800. And they're already there. And then when you look at this school, when we can walk in a classroom and there's 40 kids, first, I commend them for doing the best that they possibly can. But we have to do something to help. And it's not fair to them to tie their hands. And you just got to make it work. And we don't want to do that. We want them to know that we want to do everything possible so that the teachers, as well as the students, everyone is successful. And when you look at the feeder school, New Chelsea, when I, last year it was 7:15. When I went early at the beginning of the school year, it was 7:45. And they had 15 people in the office waiting to be enrolled. So I'm scared to see what it is at this point. So when you look at Northwest, New Chelsea, and then I was told that possibly Northwest, the new school would have the capacity of 1,000. But if you're already almost at 900 and it just seems like the population is growing, that you got to do something. And the solution may not please everybody, but you got, I remember we got busted when I went to Hawthorne, which is currently Bertram Carruthers, where two of us, two classes went to McKinley and another two went to Douglas to help with the overflow. And our teachers followed us. So it may take something like that, but you got to make it work. And we don't want to raise taxes, but we got to, whatever we can do within what we have to make it work as quick as possible.
So a question. During the bond, when we asked the community, the constituents for $235 million, when we were building these schools, did we have a demographer do anything with the buildings before we came up with the capacity?
There was some preliminary work done by a demographer. But I don't think the final hiss or her report ever came back to the board for action. It was never presented.
At the last board meeting, they said they presented it to the board and the board denied action.
So we built schools and did not build it based on a demographer's advice?
I would say yes.
Thank you. Tom, first?
The last time we changed boundaries, we started about this time of the year. And we made sure that our principals were heavily involved in parent meetings. And it went very smoothly because we had that personal touch. So the sooner we start looking at that and can get all of that set up, the better.
In order to be ready for Fall of 2020, we would need to have the consultant at least on board and start the work the 1st of December.
So would you ask for an RFP? Is that what you need us to authorize you to do? Or?
Wayne? I'm not sure you have to do an RFP because it's a service contract. But, I mean, we could contact different service providers.
It doesn't have to be competitively bid because it's a service contract. So you can select. Historically, the district's done sort of RFQs, just request for qualifications, and then selected among the qualified applicants for a service project. But there's no requirement for competitive bid under the statute because it's a service and not a good or construction.
So do you have a recommendation of a company that you want to use?
No, not at this moment. But I would get actively searching.
So if we give you permission today to do that, you could bring something back to us in December?
Yes.
I would say that we should go ahead and give them the permission now to look through the applications yourself, find someone qualified and get started. Because if you say by the 1st of December, we're going to meet after that. So in order to get the process started as soon as possible and be ready. Also, my concern is, we're building these schools, like you mentioned. And if we don't fully know the capacity, we're still continuing to build based upon the capacity without knowing. So I think that we should just be able to give permission to go out there, find someone, you and your staff, find someone to be able to get them on and then be back. You know, if you want to give us an update by the next board meeting, fine. But the work needs to get started as soon as possible.
So could I get a motion from someone board that we accept the information that has been given to us as an update for the next steps to review the school boundaries
and the capacity concerns that was submitted by Mr. Dennis Covington?
As well as hire the demographer?
Oh, you, you can't, he can't hire the demographer. That, that has to come back to the board.
He can recommend.
What, what he can do and what you can authorize is for him to either do an RFQ or whatever process you want to authorize for him to, um, obtain information from prospective, um, people to do this service and then bring that recommendation back to the board with a contract for the board to approve or not approve. So he, he can't hire or, or select anybody. That's the board's job.
Okay. So can I get a recommendation that we, uh, allow Mr. Covington to go through the process to obtain information for people to do the service that will review the bound, the school boundaries and the capacity of the concerns?
Bring the recommendation to our-
And bring the recommendation to the board at our December meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Covington.
He's here for the next one too.
As said, the Kansas Board of Education accept as an informational item proposal options to open an early childhood center on Bethel Elementary's school site as submitted by Lenora Miller, Executive Director of Operations and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
During the, uh, approval of the bonds, it was approved that we would convert Bethel Elementary into an early childhood center. In your handouts, there's a couple of things you should see. Uh, there's one like a spreadsheet, that was given of the proposed to make Bethel the early childhood center. If you look at the spreadsheet with the, uh, dollar figures on it, you'll see the initial budget was approved in the bond is 1.8 million dollars. Based on the design that you have in front of you to complete the work and turn it into-
The spreadsheet?
Is, is this the spreadsheet?
The handout.
Go ahead.
Okay. To complete the work, based on the design that we have, I had our architect to complete, that cost nine is 4.8 million dollars to, to convert current Bethel into an early childhood center.
Before you go, now it, how did we get to the original number? Because there was an original number to convert it that was given.
Uh, there was some very preliminary work done.
Do we know who and how?
No, I do not. It was, I don't know if this was what was left after we'd really done the costing of the new buildings and all the other stuff that was in the bond.
Was any, was there an architect involved?
No.
Okay.
No, no architect, no.
So this is the architect that you had?
Yes, that's one that, uh, we had to go out and say, if we had to convert Bethel into an early childhood center, what would you recommend and make it fully functional as an early childhood center? Not a head start center, which would be far more expensive, but as an early childhood center.
So you told our constituents that it was going to cost 1.7 million without an architect?
I didn't, what was it?
This first, it says validated budget?
Yes.
We told everyone that it was without an architect?
That's approved in the bond.
Approved in the bond, the board voted on this.
What, what year was this done? Or what year was it validated?
It was in the original bond package, so that was-
Oh, okay. Swear this board.
1816?
It was an estimate at the time.
Yes, it was, it was an estimate.
Estimate.
Okay.
Very low estimate.
Without an architect?
Without an architect.
Is that the norm?
To-
To do this without an architect?
No, ma'am. That is never the norm. You need to have someone with that, that degree go out and look at your facilities to determine, at least to get a basic cost.
So, if it doesn't change to an early childhood center and just stays Bethel, would that impact, impact our boundaries? You know, when we have someone look at the boundaries, are they, will they be included in Bethel or Bethel's off the mark and just for the-
That would be a board decision because right now Bethel is scheduled to close unless we turn it to an early childhood center. If you vote, if you vote to leave Bethel open as an elementary school, it will be included in the boundaries.
So you have to remember that the board voted to combine Bethel and White Church to become Bruny, a new school.
But that was before the problem with the boundaries that we-
You were voting on information that was brought to you.
Right.
And so the board voted, we built a new school without a demographer. We are doing this without an architect. So now what we have are actuals.
And the other piece today is based on stuff that we know. We're not sure Bethel is the site to put an early childhood center.
Right, I'm, yeah, the board needs to talk about this more.
I think we do.
Yeah. So when would you need direction?
Today? Uh, no, just jokingly, uh-
Because I believe that the demographer that we're hiring, well, if we could keep Bethel, maybe an option for additional students of overflow. Because closing a school now that we know doesn't make sense. And so I think we would need more information from someone, like you said, a qualified demographer, taking into consideration possibly Bethel and pausing this modification because there's a big difference between 1 million and 4 million.
What do you tell the constituents?
That would have to come back from the board.
I was on the board on the bond committee. We told the constituents, we were going to combine those two schools and look at opening Bethel as an early childhood center.
We tell our constituents that we didn't have the right demographer nor the right person doing an analysis, so therefore we're making reconsiderations. If our community asks, well, why are we thinking about it or reconsideration? We will say, look at New Chelsea, look at the overflow, go to our high schools, look at the overflow. We now need to change direction based upon a sensible, responsible choice rather than an uneducated one without the proper information prior to this current board.
Dr. Jaeger, I have to disagree with the uneducated. There were many studies done. You were not on the board at the time, I realize. And most of the people here do not know the ins and outs of all the bond plan.
We have, but-
So, there were, there were demographic things used. However, we have to realize our county and our city is rapidly changing. So yes, I think it's a good idea to do the demographer thing to get an accurate count of today. Today is not the same as five years ago or six years ago. So that is a good thing, but we need to quit looking back and blaming and saying people were uneducated and didn't do their due diligence.
Uh, the word uneducated means that it, that as it was noted last week, last board meeting, it was brought to the board about the overflow and the overpopulation of schools, meaning uneducated, the, not as, uneducated meaning all of the information presented may not have been presented in depth. If there was previously not a demographer or an architect, that means that there was not an educated information brought forth to make a decision about the proper usage of funds, the proper amount of money to be spent, the proper amount. So when I say it was uneducated, meaning that there was not enough information and studies could have been done, but as we've seen, seven years ago, it was brought forth that our schools overflowing. Last board meeting, it's been noted, over year after year after year, the population is changing and we need to do something about the boundaries. So that is what I mean by uneducated. It is our responsibility to educate the community that in the past, decisions that were made does not currently reflect where we are. And going forward, they will need to understand and they will understand because they are complaining, parents are complaining about the number of students in classroom. Teachers are complaining. So they will understand that the decisions we make will be based upon proper and thorough research that we will listen and understand. That's what I mean when I say the community or the board was uneducated.
Ms. Page, did you have a comment?
It just sounds like we need to do more research, find out more information and not, shouldn't make a decision today. There's still work to do. We all have valid points and our job is to make sure we spend our money wisely and do what's best for the community. The intent at that time was something, was lacking some things, but now we need to clean it up.
Yes, ma'am.
So with all that being said, I think what is necessary is for us to make sure that we do understand, uh, White Church and Brunet are going to be open in the fall. That's fine, but we, again, we do need to look at this.
Not White Church.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, not White Church and Brunet, White Church and Bethel are closing. Brunet is going to open. What we need to do is to get a demographer to look at this and then make a decision from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that. So we are next supposed to have the recess to executive session for consultation with attorney on matters which could be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship.
He sent me a, a text from the airport. He's on his way, so I just don't know if he's physically here yet. Is he here? Okay, he is here. We can do executive session. Yeah, you're fine. I just, I didn't see you over there.
So how many minutes will we need?
How, how much time do you need for the presentation? Okay. 30 minutes?
30, okay. So I need a motion from the board to recess to executive session. Someone- Starting at 10:15 for 30 minutes for consultation with attorney on the matters which would be deemed privileged attorney-client relationship under the Open Meetings Act. And the board will return, uh, session at 10:45. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we will, uh, dismiss at 10:15 and reconvene at 10:45. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. I need a motion that we would go back into our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will have the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library for us to approve the human resources and recommendations.
As said, the Kansas City Board of Education approved the Human Resources Report and Recommendations for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
All those in favor say aye? I'm, I'm sorry, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the, uh, payment of bills for the library services, uh, human resources and recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're ready for, to approve payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries?
As said, the Kansas City Board of Education approved the payment of bills for library services as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve payment for the bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're now ready for the consent agenda.
Madam President?
Oh, I was wondering, can we pull J and K, please?
Okay.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda of mine as J and K.
Thank you. Could I have a seconded?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda with pulling off of item J and K for discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Ms. Page, you wanted to address?
Yeah, for item J, I guess my question is, as a teacher, and, and I don't have a problem with everything that's listed here, but when do the grade books close? I mean, will it close? Do, do they have nine weeks and maybe two or three weeks until? I, I think they need to know. That question, I know when I taught, that was always an issue. It was open and does it ever close or when, you know, is it final after four weeks? Is there a time limit on when you can go back and change things? So I just think for clarity for teachers, they need to know. Is there a time limit? Does it close? Is it always open? Just for clarity.
Okay, Mr. King, I'm going to-
In addition to that, I'm not sure if the board understands, but where you used to have a nine weeks. At our secondary, it just runs year long, so it doesn't stop. So nine weeks, you don't stop and then start over fresh. Your grades from the beginning of the school year, those first nine weeks through the end of, so you get 36 weeks of grades.
Okay.
It just averages all the way through.
So they can go back and change?
Some systems have it where it's a nine week, it's nine weeks it stops and then a child gets to start over and then you have with new grades. But here, we just run the entire year.
Dr. Dr. Faust, actually it's at the semester. We only do it across two quarters to a semester because we offer grade at the half credit.
So can you tell us why we do the, instead of stopping at one nine weeks and then starting a new nine weeks?
It was to, uh, so that you could do, continue on the work and for students who maybe struggled with the first, they could go back and maybe grasp, excuse me, grasp some of those things and the kids are able to do that and catch up.
I'm sure we understood that.
Okay, I just want to make sure teachers understand that because that, I know when I taught, that was always the catch 22 and, and it seemed like some of us were clear on it, some of us weren't. People were frustrated because it was just a never-ending thing. When do we clear out or, I, I know if it's continual, I get that, but I guess that's where, the way we're rolling. But that was just for clarity and I appreciate that.
You want to make a motion to approve it?
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept J.
The motion has been made that we accept the first grade re-proposed changes to the board policy. Aye, H A grading system. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Ms. Page, item K?
And then my question on K, I thought when we were doing the budget, remember when we did, the question came up about the buses, buses that we were going to kind of hold off. So is there a need because of the overflow or, just for clarity?
The need is because we have some very aging fleet of buses. And if you remember, in the capital budget, we approved $360,000 for, uh, new buses and these are the buses that's in the budget.
Thank you. So could I get a motion that we accept the low bid for purchase of school buses?
You sure can. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the low bid for purchase of school buses.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the low bid for purchase of school buses. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now ready for the approval of payment of bills?
As said, the Kansas City Board of Education approved the payment of bills as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Could I get a motion, please?
I move we pay our bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve payment of bills. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're ready now to recess to executive session to discuss confidential employee information pursuant to a non-elected personnel exception to K O M A. So we need, I need, um, how many, how many minutes will we be needing?
Ask Dr. Faust, it's in 10?
Has the original agenda. It was on, I'm not sure how many we had put. Then, um, from the agenda. 30 minutes?
Okay. Okay, so therefore I need a motion with the board to recess to executive session at, um, 11:15 for 30 minutes to be back at, under the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved. The board will return at open session at 11:45. With no action to follow. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are dismissed to our executive session. Can I get a motion that we come back into session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume and come back to session as our meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
For, for, no, the motion in relation to why we went to executive session. Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendation from the superintendent in regard to how we handle the matter.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the recommendation by the superintendent as to how we're going to handle the matter in relation to the service dog. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No opposers. We are now ready to, uh, for communications and I'm going to start with any of the board members who would like to start and then I'll come in last.
Dr. Cook could have anything?
Anything that you'd like to report on what you've been doing?
Hello?
Hello.
Well, I would like to report that we have had a strong relationship with our NEA reps and our principals. And so we had sessions in which our principals were given an opportunity to truly understand what that partnership is like. We've been working closely together to ensure that all fires are put out on campus opposed to getting to the district level position. We've been training our principals on an ongoing basis in terms of being stronger instructional leaders, working closely with, with our IIOs. So those are our updates.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Uh, I had the opportunity to attend two basketball games, Arrowhead and Central and Arrowhead and Northwest. If you're down and need a lift, it was quite an enjoyable sight.
It is.
It was something to see and it was fun and they were excited. So I enjoyed myself and I also want to say thank you so much to the board and administrators and others who were able to attend my mom's home-going celebration. I appreciate the love. Thank you.
Uh, this, uh, month has been an exciting month. Um, I've been to a lot of schools, went to games and things of that nature. Um, I am excited for the upcoming events that are going on this week as well. Want to say happy Founder's Day to the ladies of Sigma Gamma Rho and to my soul war here, yay. Sigma Gamma Rho today is our Founder's Day. So I know there's a number of soul wards that do work for the district and I'm just excited to see 97 years of service, the commitment of our sororities that we give service to the community on an ongoing basis. And you'll see, um, us serving on boards as well as in schools to help, um, raise the standards in our community of excellence. Um, I've also, um, look forward to being engaged in the community as we have the upcoming events for the migrant event on Wednesday celebration and then on Saturday Avenue of Life. And again, congratulations to our new board members, uh, who were able to get re-elected as well as the new ones. Looking forward to continually working with them.
Humphreys?
Like Ms. Page said, the basketball games are very, very fun. Been to several of those. I went to the, went and froze myself at the Washington playoff game. I only made it through the third quarter, so. And then Saturday, along with Ms. Drew, we enjoyed Literary Festival, Edge Legal. That was a wonderful experience.
That was a wonderful experience and I can't wait to see how many kids we have next year.
Thank you. Well, I had an opportunity with Ms. Humphries to attend the Reared and Centered, form the Wind Out Unified Government where they did a presentation on how they can try to generate and bring further businesses here. She and I also attended the Schlegel Jag Services. And I also ended up coming and visiting Northwest on this last, this past Monday. Did attend the CBIZ meeting with the entire cabinet down on the plaza. I met with Carol Levers at the central office on last Wednesday to tour the building at the main library and also meet with Garcia Architects to look at possible changes that could take place. I came and had a general prep meeting with Dr. Faust and our Vice President. I also, on Thursday of last week, met with Jen Holt to talk to her about the grading policies. I went to the prayer breakfast for the mayor on this past Friday at AM along with Janie Humphries, who was there. And then went to the KC KPS Literacy Festival. So my days have been quite busy, but I'm very pleased to be able to do that, to be visible and to be able to be supportive as much as I can to anything within the district. I wanted to acknowledge first, before we close out, that experiment was sent to the space station by the Coronado students and they're presenting at the State Board of Education this afternoon at 1:30. And so we're just pleased that they're doing that. We are going to be having a new candidate meet and greet on this Saturday, November the 16th, at the central office from 8:30 to 10:30. And then I want the board members to consider in December, January, possible dates for a retreat so that we can bond together as a team with the newer members who are going to be present. So if you will submit dates to me through email as to when you will be available and we'll be giving more details about that a little bit later. But we want to make sure that we are going to come together January to hit the floor and be on the right track.
Madam President, do we need to vote on, on the board retreat?
Is it necessary for us to do?
We don't need to vote on?
For us to be able to have one?
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, the, a board retreat would essentially be a meeting. The board president could call it, but there would have to be a vote for a board retreat, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So with that, we are now pointing out the calendar of events. They are listed here in your email and just want to stress that we will be having the Avenue of Life House Ribbon Cutting Services, which is on November the 16th, right after we get through with our meet and greet with our newer members and other things that are listed here. And I'm going to hold, expect you to be able to make the decisions as to where you're going to be.
And I think Susan needed to know, were there anyone who was going to attend the KASB conference?
In December in Wichita. Janie Humphries is going to go.
I'm considering it.
Yes, I have to try to make my schedule flexible, so I will be in touch with you, Susan, to let you know. Okay. And then also the National School Board Association is in Chicago, Illinois, April the 4th through the 6th.
I'm interested in attending that.
And so if you will notify Susan as well.
Yeah, Wanda's saying she's interested.
Okay, we're not a member. Okay, and so just be sure to let the board clerk know that you're going to be in attendance. Okay, are there any other questions, concerns, or anything we need to discuss? Could I get a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
So moved?
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded that the meeting is adjourned. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is over. Thank you.